Good afternoon. Can you guys hear me? All right, welcome to our January meeting of the Leon County Board of County Commissioners. Thank you for all being, uh, thank you all for being here. Uh, we're gonna start today with, uh, the invocation by Reverend Michael Price from Bethel AME Church. Our new, uh, our new Reverend at Bethel AME, welcome to our chambers. This is the first time you've been here?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you for inviting me, thank you for having me.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Reverend Price is our brand-new pastor at Bethel African Methodist Episcopal Methodist Church. Uh, very proud to have him, he's doing an absolutely amazing job for us at the church, and wanted to welcome you to the community, it's the first time in the chambers, picked a great meeting to go to, come to with all these great folks here today, uh, but we want to thank you for your, your willingness to come today and for, uh, the prayer that you're about to give us.
Thank you for the kind words, um, Brother Nick, I will not tell them how much I paid you offense to say those words, but thank you. Let me pray, if you so choose, let me do so in my tradition, and then recite a prayer by Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. at the 1956, um, Democratic National Convention in Chicago, Illinois. Gracious and wonderful God, we thank you for life, liberty, health, and strength. We thank you for the democracy that is the United States of America, this republic. We thank you for the Constitution, the Bill of Rights. We only pray, God, that we can live those Constitution and Bill of Rights in a manner that is pleasing with you, so that all people who enter the shores of this nation might find dignity, grace, mercy, peace, and an opportunity for a better life. Bless each of our county commissioners and administrators, bless this beautiful state called Florida, bless this beautiful county called Leon County, and this city we live in called Tallahassee. Bless all of our leaders politically, faith leaders, bless our corporate entities, bless the work of our hands that it may be in your hands, and as we deliberate today, oh God, let justice be the triumph card. In the words of Dr. King, oh God, our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of assembling here this afternoon. We thank you for all the opportunities of life, and we stand together today and discuss vital matters confronting our county and city, state, and this nation, and confronting our world. As we ask your guidance, be with us in all of our deliberations, and help us at all times to seek to do those things which are high, noble, and good. To make our county, city, state, and nation one that is truly a great nation, and a people and a nation and a city and a state and county that follows all of the noble precepts of the Christian religion and all the noble precepts of democracy. Grant us, oh God, that as we move on, we will move toward that city which has foundations whose builder and maker is God. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend Price, uh, Commissioner Maddox, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you Commissioner Maddox, um, before we get into awards and presentations, I wanted to ask the board if we could entertain a motion to, uh, change the agenda and move up items 22, 23, and 24 ahead of item 21, which we have a, a pretty good crowd here to support, that way we can, uh, get those out of the way, anybody that's here for those items?
Mr. Chairman, second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second for agenda modification, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Okay, so, Cajun folks, we've moved you guys to, to the end, but we should be able to get through general business pretty quickly and get some folks, uh, moving. Um, okay, we're, Mr. County Administrator, we're on awards and presentations?
Yes, first proclamation up is recognizing Florida A&amp;M, uh, and Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, board's indulgence, I'd like to ask Florida A&amp;M graduate and, uh, Leon County, uh, elected school member, Darrell Jones, to join us, uh, as Florida A&amp;M is a part of his school board district if this board, uh-
Absolutely.
-would allow. School board member Jones, if you would please join me, the elector. We're very pleased that, um, Florida A&amp;M University's CEO, Dr. Donald Palm, has joined us representing the university today. Very glad that, uh, school board member Darrell Jones, uh, who was Margaret King Convocation Speaker, uh, Friday ago, um, we thank you, and I know your appreciation for, uh, the sentiments conveyed by our board are shared by you as well as, uh, elected official of our community. I wanted to say also before we share this, Dr. Palm, uh, not captured in these words, but there is an immense, uh, sense of gratitude to Florida A&amp;M University and its role, uh, during COVID vaccinations, and, uh, I can't remember what the final numbers, but it exceeded half a million, um, and what Florida A&amp;M University did to us in the time of that epidemic, uh, was that we evolved from a boutique beginning where people receiving the shot for COVID, uh, you had to have a car, and you had to have insurance, and, uh, FAMU interjected and played host to, uh, the site of anybody, uh, go walk up, car, no car, insurance and no insurance, and I think that, uh, that will always be, to me, uh, a high point of, uh, the role of the university. Our proclamation today reads, whereas Florida A&amp;M University rose 10 places to reach number 81 among the 2025 U.S. News and World Report Top Public Universities, and whereas in the latest rankings, FAMU remained the highest-rated public historically black college and university of six consecutive year, and third among all private and public HBCUs. Whereas FAMU also moved up to number 20 on the U.S. News and World Report Social Mobility Index, an indication of the ability of Florida's only public HBCU to change the economic trajectory of graduates and their families for generations to come. FAMU is ranked number 87 for best value among national universities, a reflection of the institution's relatively low cost, low-cost tuition and the success of its graduates. And whereas the U.S. News and World Report rankings are a reflection of the tireless efforts of our students, faculty, and staff in establishing FAMU as a world-class institution, said interim president Timothy Beer, Ph.D., who thanked the FAMU Board of Trustees, the Florida Board of Governors, and the state legislature for their unselfish support. And whereas FAMU entered the U.S. News and World Report Top 100 Public Universities at number 91 after being 103 the previous year, FAMU is ranked number 152 among all national universities, both public and private. If Brother Darrell Jones was, was, was speaking now, he would say, "You may applaud, why don't you applaud?"
Number 152. Did I say that name? You may applaud.
Thank you.
I stole that from you.
The university has set records of more than 100 million in research awards and annual fundraising, which is nearly 27 million, and whereas FAMU has seen gains in its retention and four-year graduation rate, Florida's only public HBCU boasts more than 9,000 students enrolled in more than a dozen colleges and schools. The success of Florida A&amp;M University is a testament to its students, faculty, and administrators. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Leon County Board of County Commissioners recognize Florida Agriculture and Mechanical University, were being ranked as the number one HBCU and the 81st public university in the country, dated this 28th day of January 25, signed by all seven county commissioners attested to by our county administrator, and also not captured, um, in either of these renderings of a whereas clause, uh, is the economic impact that Florida A&amp;M has on our local economy, no word, no mention of that part either. Dr. Palm, we appreciate Florida A&amp;M University, uh, especially in times such as these. We welcome you, uh, to have a word unless, uh, uh, school board member, uh, who shares that district, he's good, we're good, God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you Commissioner Proctor, uh, can, can the, the audience, can you do me a favor? If you are affiliated with FAMU or you're a graduate of FAMU, would you please stand as well, just to be recognized as well? I, um, Chair Welch and Commissioners, again, I want to thank you for this recognition, this proclamation, it really means so much, uh, to us. I wanted the, uh, the, the audience to stand because the U.S. News World Reports actually mentions our rank, and the rankings is how we're moving up, FAMU is on the rise, but the proof of FAMU's success is in our graduates, right? We can prove that we are on the rise, our best days are ahead of us, and so, again, I want to thank the Florida Legislature, uh, our Chair Brian Lamb from the Board of Governors, our trustees at Florida A&amp;M University, the leadership with Dr. interim, uh, President Dr. Beer, and the senior leadership team, our faculty, staff-
Faculty?
Faculty. And staff, and students, for what they do, and FAMU will continue to rise, and again, as I said before, our best days are ahead of us. Thank you very much for this, this means a lot to us, thank you very much.
Uh, Dr. Palm, I, you, you, you failed to mention, but I know that you already know that the Chairman of the Florida Board of Governors, Brian Lamb, is a graduate of FAMU DRS, I believe 92 of three, and, um, you should also know that this almost got canceled today when I received notice that the, uh, Orange Bowl has been revived and possibly FAMU wants another little piece of Howard University.
We almost got canceled. We almost canceled this today.
All right, the, uh, the next proclamation is gonna be, uh, uh, recognizing January's Human Trafficking Prevention Month is gonna be, uh, presented at an event later this week, so we're gonna pull that one, uh, and then I've got the next one, can I have the Charles volleyball team, y'all come up here to the podium? All right, uh, thank you guys for the opportunity to do this behind me, and, you know, it's, Commissioner Proctor's recognizing the number one HBCU, uh, in the country, and following that, we are recognizing the number one volleyball team in the, uh, Division of 5A in the state of Florida, so we like to reward excellence around here, let's give them a round of applause. Now you guys know I have a soft spot for Charles High School for obvious reasons, but I can tell you in the 18 years that I've been there, I believe, Coach Jan, correct me if I'm wrong, we've only had two team, uh, sport state champions, right? We had a soccer team a couple of years ago, and now our volleyball, our girls volleyball team, and, um, 25 and 1, I'm gonna say all that in your proclamation, but, uh, really impressive stuff, and, uh, and Coach Jan, I'm gonna give you a, an opportunity to speak when I'm done, but, uh, we are super proud of all of these ladies and, uh, and happy to have them here to celebrate them, so, let me just rattle off a few of these accomplishments for you. Whereas the Lawton Charles High School volleyball team demonstrated unwavering dedication, perseverance, and exceptional athleticism throughout the season, overcoming challenges and continuously striving for excellence in their craft, and whereas the team, under the outstanding leadership of head coach Caitlin Jan, has upheld a strong tradition of athletic and academic excellence, exemplifying the values of teamwork, discipline, and sportsmanship both on and off the floor, and whereas for many years, the Charles volleyball team has been a dominant force in competitive volleyball, earning multiple regional championships, including titles in 2017, 18, and 19, and achieving state runner-up positions in 17 and 21, steadily building upon their program's success, and whereas, throughout the season, the team demonstrated extraordinary commitment and resilience, executing complex routines with precision and skill, overcoming rigorous competition at every level, and proving themselves as the best in the state of Florida. And whereas, as a result of their tireless dedication and hard-fought efforts, the Lawton Charles High School volleyball team secured the 2024 Florida High School Athletic Association State Championship, a historic achievement that solidifies their place as one of the premier volleyball programs in Florida, and whereas this championship victory not only recognizes the team's physical skill, but also highlights their determination, teamwork, and sportsmanship, making them a source of immense pride for Lawton Charles High School, Leon County, and the Tallahassee community. So now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County hereby recognize the state champion Lawton Charles High School volleyball team. We all signed it, and everybody's legit ladies, all right, let's give them a round of applause. I'm gonna give you guys this in a second, we can take some pictures after, uh, Coach Jan and maybe come, some of the players say a few words, but if you've not been to a high school volleyball game lately, I can tell you, it's a sight to behold, and at Charles High School, it is especially a sight to behold, that place is a-rockin', and you wanna talk about the ultimate team sport, I mean, you, you guys can't mess up or you literally drop the ball, right? So you have to stay on it, so, uh, it is a, it, these ladies are, are top-tier athletes, top-tier students, and, uh, and I have had several of them in my class, and they are, they are really something to be proud of, so, uh, we are so happy that y'all are here, thank you for coming downtown, we appreciate it, and, uh, Coach Jan, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Uh, thank you Commissioner Welch, um, we are happy to be here, um, hope to be here again next year as well, um, but Charles is just a, a small part for a lot of these girls, um, you know, laying the foundation for them to go continue and play on at the next level, um, is always our goal. Of course, a state championship's better, um, when we, you know, are able to do that, um, but we're really proud of all of their dedication, hard work, um, we have a great community at Charles that supports us, um, fans and faculty, um, so thank you all, and we're happy to be here, we appreciate it.
Um, I should thank everyone for the enormous support we had throughout the season, um, I know it was always nice when we had a big crowd at our games, so, and just for this is really appreciative, so, thank you for everything.
Okay, before we're done, real quick, we're gonna take a picture in a minute over here, so we're gonna look over here at this nice lady, and we're gonna try to fit everybody in. Um, I do want to mention, and we did not do proclamations, because it's a team sport, we don't do proclamations for individuals, but it is important to note that Coach Jan was awarded Coach of the Year, right? Dairy Farmers Court, well, local Coach of the Year obviously, but also Florida 5A Coach of the Year by the Florida Dairy Farmers, so let's give her a round of applause for that. And then also, very significantly, the young lady who just spoke to you, Kate Stewart, come up here Kate, Kate will never tell you this, but Kate was also the 5A Dairy Farmer, uh, volleyball player of the year, but on top of that, was also awarded Miss Volleyball in the state of Florida for all divisions by the Florida Dairy Farmers. So, uh, I think it's very important that we give Kate her flowers for, for that and remarkable achievement, no one has ever done that north of Orlando, I'm being told, so, so we gonna, uh, we're gonna let people know that north Florida, we got some volleyball players up here, all right? So, uh, thank you Commissioners so much. Did anybody want to say anything, or y'all good? Awesome. All right, we're gonna take a photo, how you wanna do it? You wanna go up there?
Commissioner Cummins, did you play volleyball?
Okay.
Was you on the ball? Basketball. Track. I think you gotta go.
uh, District Four kids. Um, okay, uh, I believe next on the agenda, we've got a presentation, uh, on the Florida Civil Rights Museum from Mr. Delatory Hollinger and Ms. Jacqueline Perkins.
We very much appreciate the opportunity to give you this presentation on today. At this time, it's a pleasure for us to give you a few of our projects and activities that we've completed over the previous two years.
The Florida Civil Rights Museum is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) that was established to create a space to celebrate, preserve, and share the legacies and stories of diverse individuals and their roles as educational and civil rights pioneers in Leon County in the state of Florida, regardless of race, creed, or color. As requested by the Leon Count, by Leon County, the FCRM has completed its goal of establishing a database showcasing more than 250 local pioneers who impacted the progression and advancement of Leon County citizens and its societal norms. Through education, research, programs, and connections to reference materials, the FCRM provides a virtual space to explore, share, and hear the stories of extraordinary individuals whose body of work and accomplishments were historic, impactful, and transformational in the areas of education and/or civil rights in the state of Florida. We want to point out that the Florida Civil Rights Museum is the only fully virtual civil rights museum in the nation.
The Florida Civil Rights Museum via our virtual platform uniquely displays, protects, and preserves the rich history, stories, and legacies of civil rights and educational pioneers who shaped the history and forward trajectory of Florida. Through continuous and expansive partnerships and statewide efforts aimed at telling a comprehensive story, the FCRM hopes to inspire a generation and offer hope and help through the establishment of programs and act, and initiatives designed to encourage civic participation and motivate all citizens.
In the summer of 2022, prior to receiving funding from Leon County, the co-executive directors sent correspondents to several directors and administrator, administrators of museums in Tallahassee, they're listed here. We wanted to inform them of our vision and our intention to initiate the Florida Civil Rights Museum. Subsequently, we scheduled meetings to discuss opportunities for collaboration and/or partnerships, and they're all listed on the, uh, screen there.
The effort to secure funding to support the FCRM's operations is one of the most critical activities we've had to undertake and sustain over the past two years. The co-executive directors worked tirelessly to advocate for funding during the 2022 and 2023 Florida Legislative Sessions. It was an honor for our project to be designated as a legislative priority by the Board of County Commissioners. It was imperative that we took the lead role as advocates for the FCRM. Accordingly, FCRM staff met with numerous senators and representatives, including the Leon County Legislative Delegation, who filed the appropriate budget requests on the museum's behalf. FCRM staff worked consistently to educate legislators who were members of the Infrastructure and Tourism Appropriation Subcommittee in the House, as well as the Tourism and Economic Development Appropriation Subcommittee in the Senate, on the importance of the museum and its potential impact on Floridians.
The FCRM's co-executive directors played a vital role in assisting in the design and development of a unique model that allows a multi-dimensional museum to be presented to the public via a virtual platform. In June of 2023, we received a determination letter and formal recognition as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization by the Internal Revenue Service, retroactive to May 19, 2021, which is the museum's official date of incorporation. The Florida Civil Rights Museum Incorporated launched officially on September 14, 2023 at Goodwood Museum and Gardens.
The FCRM has incorporated youth-centered and youth-led components, which will elevate their participation and facilitate learning gains. Elementary, middle, and high school students will contribute to the museum's efforts to highlight significant local and state civil rights and education pioneers by their participation in the I Am Series. The I Am Series is an initiative that affords students the opportunity to portray a great civil rights or education pioneer. Students conduct research independently on the pioneer, and subsequently, prepare a script for a three-to-four-minute oratorical presentation, which will be filmed and included in the museum. This initiative aims to cultivate a cadre of historians and curators.
We're involved in a number of activities, uh, to facilitate operational program development, and they're listed on the screen in the interest of time, we're not gonna read everything, but what was most important, that we identified 30 local and state civil rights and education pioneers to be featured in our initial virtual museum gallery. FCRM hosted a launch event on September 4th with family and friends present to honor our pioneers. It is important to note that all of our pioneers in our initial, um, gallery, they're all deceased, so we had their family and friends there.
Highlights for 2023: reviewed, assessed, and refined various components of museum website to make it user-friendly, developed and disseminated marketing material for museum, and continued to strengthen partnerships and enhanced outreach efforts to facilitate community engagement.
We have some highlights for 2024. To assist the families, the FCRM coordinated ceremonies to coincide with the renaming of streets for Major James Morgan Jr. and former Leon County Commissioner Anita Davis. We prepared documents and performed duties and tasks required to accept the state legislative appropriation, planned and developed and coordinated the inaugural signature fundraising event, the FCRM Black Tie Fair and Wall of Distinction Ceremony, which was held on January 16, 2025. We acknowledged and presented 10 living legend honorees, one of whom is here today, no, actually three, one community champion, as well as 22 inductees into the Wall of Distinction. We secured a facility to house museum offices and limited exhibit space, initiated purchase of equipment needed for traveling museum exhibits.
The FCRM planned and hosted the Youth Service and Leadership Forum on June 25, 2024, planned and hosted the Journey to Justice Distinguished Lecture Series on November 15, 2024, a panel discussion led by Mrs. Altamis Barnes and Dr. Andrea Oliver, and the FCRM coordinated with Bond Elementary School's National Junior Beta Club students, who made a major presentation during the FCRM's Black Tie Fair and Wall of Distinction Ceremony.
We're just about done, we wanted to provide to you some of the salient outcomes. Uh, we've developed a more effective method to enhance community and youth engagement in the Big Ben and throughout the state of Florida. We will be leaving Leon County, and we have to continue to do what we need to do, uh, in the state of Florida. Uh, we participated in a number of bicentennial activities, including Leon County and the Village Squares Created Equal Forum. We partnered with the Tallahassee Democrat and produced a list of the most, the 200 most influential African-American Leon Countyers of the last 200 years. We were invited to present at the Florida Historical Society's 200, 2024 Conference. We partnered with WCTV to film a weekly news segment entitled Tally Back Then, which highlighted several local civil rights pioneers. We researched and presented significant findings on the life and legacy of E. Lillian Spencer, a FAMU alumni, tennis champion, and the third principal of Bond School. We initiated a private fundraising effort to place a monument on Spencer's previously unmarked grave. The latest research showed that this woman who had made all these significant accomplishments was in an unmarked grave. Uh, we launched the Florida Civil Rights and Education Heritage Trail with the first installment taking place in Leon County. Someone might ask, did we get a return on our- Someone might ask, did we get a return on our investment? The answer is absolutely yes. I'm happy to announce that the FCRM provided services to all residents at a per capita cost of 20 cents, 20 cents, in 2023, and our per capita cost was 19.8 cents in 2024. Cost-benefit analyses and digital and print analytics will be provided in our final report.
The FCRM would like to extend our gratitude to the Leon County Board of County Commissioners for your assistance and support, and certainly we're available to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you both. I like to take every opportunity that you get in front of us to get to say thank you. What you've done is done something that's never been done before. You did it on time and early. You did it within the budget that you were given, and you just knocked it out of the park. And I was glad to see that part of your initiatives will be to initiate capital campaign in addition to county support. If you don't know, them getting their 501(c)(3) designation means anyone hearing my voice can contribute in a tax-deductible donation to their good cause. Thank you both so much for your work.
We appreciate you. Finally, I want to say that we, everywhere we went, we made sure that the audience knew that we received our initial funding from the Board of County Commissioners. And again, we thank you. We appreciate you.
Commissioner Miner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hollinger and Ms. Perkins, I just wanted to echo what Commissioner O'Keefe has just said. It's really incredible what you have been able to do in the short time that you've had. I remember when you first came here, and you had the kernel of a vision, and yet you've taken that vision and made it something virtually concrete, right? It's really incredible what you've done, and just, I want to thank you for the work that you're doing. I'm looking forward to the work that you're continuing to do, not just here in Leon County, but throughout the state. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Hollinger and Ms. Perkins, I just want to, I guess, echo everybody's sentiment for the great job you all have done, and of course, the fact that you all instituted the first virtual museum in the country. I think it's just amazing. But I like the fact that you all are honoring individuals who were part of the struggle, who contributed to the struggle regardless of race, color, creed. So, I commend you for that, and thank you for your good work. And certainly, we supported you all initially, and if you hear the sentiment of this board, we will continue our support. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Perkins, Ms. Hollinger, I'm not surprised. The two of you all are like Batman and Robin, Shaggy and Scooby-Doo. Y'all can solve anything and find ghosts and the ghosts from the past. You all are great, phenomenal. What I would suggest is, I would be willing, and I would even ask our board to consider writing to the Smithsonian, the African-American Museum, National Museum, given that yours is a virtual museum, that your museum is incorporated within the national structure of National African-American Museum. You've probably have given a window of thought to how that museum can be presented, but they're not Perkins and Hollinger. So, you know, the two of you all are amazing. But I would be open and would like to ask our board, Mr. Chairman, if this board would do a letter of introduction of this museum, and seeking through the executive director's board, the incorporation of the Florida Civil Rights Museum in its totality because it's so readily available to be received. Now, I don't know the standards with which they use for induction and recognition, but if they would trust our state's Tenth Amendment right, and that our state can filter those persons, I would like to offer that as a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we introduce this to the National Museum and ask its incorporation.
Can we take a motion in this posture, Madam County Attorney?
This is actually something that would probably come under Commissioner's discussion time. If the board decides to do it now versus later, remember, it would require a unanimous vote.
I think we probably have a unanimous vote. So, we've got a motion by Commissioner Proctor. Is there a second?
I have a second motion, Mr. Chair.
Second. Commissioner Cummings, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. That's a staff, a letter from the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much. Commissioners, as of right now, our deliberators are not working, our little cue machine. So, if you raise your card to let me know if you want to speak, I'll do my best to see or just scream at me. I don't mind. Okay, Mr. County Administrator, do we have citizens to be heard on consent and non-agenda items?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we have several speakers to be heard on consent and non-agenda items. The first, Stephen Morton, virtual speaker.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I'm speaking on Consent Item 11 about the Micasuki Greenway on Walani Plantation. When I think of development of Walani and Greenway, another word with the same first seven letters as Greenway comes to mind, greenwash. The Greenway deed was established in 2002, and from the beginning, roadway easements were planned to be cut through the Greenway, yet many were unaware of this till recently. One group well aware of it back then was Friends of the Greenway, whom I thought would have sounded alarms and raised red flags from the start, but they didn't. Why not? Some of those friends were friends with the owners of the plantation and/or those owners' friends, including former county and city commissioners. Some were also members of the Walani Community Advisory Group that I was constantly reminded of when I spoke out against proposed development on Walani, now known as Canopy. I was repeatedly told about this group's approval of proposed development and how unreasonable my opposition was. A 2003 Tallahassee Magazine article titled "Developing Trust: The Area's Most Outspoken Activist," this advisory group I was talking about, helped with a plan everyone is optimistic about for the future of Walani Plantation. The Greenway and this advisory group were used as tools to greenwash the public into believing the owners of the plantation were environmentally trustworthy. This was well before environmentally controversial development of Walani Plantation was made public. At this time, Walani was unincorporated and under the county's jurisdiction. The city then went behind the county's back to initiate annexation. The county's initial response was to challenge the city. In late 2005, exchange between the county and the city, December 12, county commissioners requested an explanation as to why the city adopted an ordinance approving annexation of Walani Plantation despite the county's objection. The county commission met the next day. On the 16th, the county commissioners authorized the county attorney to pursue any and all necessary litigation to obey or reverse the city's failure to comply with the comp plan concerning annexation. But soon after, in 2006, the county reversed its position thanks to two county commissioners convincing the rest of the commission to back down. Those two commissioners were friends with the owners of Walani and/or developers, and both received bundled donations in 2005 and '06 from the developers of Canopy. Here we are, 20 years later. In hindsight, it's too bad the county didn't stand firm and respond differently to what's been happening on Walani Plantation. I'm surprised Friends of the Micasuki Greenway didn't show more concern until it was too late. Where were those friends when it mattered? In conclusion, development of Walani has been friends helping friends. The Micasuki Greenway promoted environmental trust, but it was not until long after the Greenway was established that most of the public became aware of the full story. Yet, a few were well aware of it, including Friends of the Greenway, who were as well friends of the plantation owners.
Mr. Morton, your time is up.
They, I'm just almost, they and this group served their personal friends better than the Greenway or the land on Walani Plantation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. Next speaker, Mr. County Administrator.
Next speaker, also a virtual speaker, Carolyn Burns.
Ms. Burns.
Okay, we'll see if we can make the connection.
Next speaker.
Next speaker, Sarah Fiedler, Sarah Fiedler, to be followed by Laura McNeff. Sarah Fiedler or Laura McNeff? Laura, Sarah? I'm sorry, Sarah or Laura, please come on up. Ms. McNeff, please come on up.
Good afternoon. My name's Laura McNeff, and I'm here to speak in support of a resolution that I believe Commissioner Miner will be bringing up later on hands-free legislation this session. In 2014, my son Anthony was on his way from his part-time job to his college classes, and he was struck and killed by a distracted driver. He was just 19 years old. Anthony was an amazing kid with a big heart and a bright future, and that future was cut short by one person's decision to pay more attention to their phone than the road. When I was notified, my world crumbled. There's nothing I would give and wouldn't give to see his face again. We started a foundation in his name and have since pushed for raising awareness for distracted driving and stronger laws. In 2019, the texting ban was passed, but it's not enough. Hundreds of families in Florida are unnecessarily losing loved ones each year and traffic fatalities as a result of distracted drivers. It's our mission to educate the lawmakers this session about the critical need for lifesaving legislation. While 46 other states have already enacted such laws, Florida is lagging behind, and the cost is being measured in lives and families destroyed. The states that implemented hands-free laws have seen immediate decline in fatalities. We're on a statewide tour, visiting all 67 county commissioner boards to ask for support, to urge state law, to adopt a resolution, and urge state lawmakers to pass a hands-free law this session. The response has been very overwhelming, with counties such as Union adopting the resolution on the spot. We're hoping today that Leon will do the same. Legislation is going to be in session soon, and sometimes there's a gap between what they think priorities are and what our priorities are. We need you to be our bridge, to cover that gap, to have our voices heard. I want to leave today knowing that I have done everything possible so that you don't have to experience what I had. I want to know that I've done everything possible so my 16-year-old son that's on the road right now will come home safe to me. So, I'm asking you to be that bridge for us. I don't normally do the speeches, but our speaker is actually down in Orlando at another meeting like this, asking for support. So, I truly hope you will adopt this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McNeff, for your strength and for being here. We're tremendously sorry for your loss, and Commissioner Miner, we'll be looking forward to hear from you later on that. Mr. Administrator?
Next speaker, Reggie Grant.
Mr. Grant, I think I'm supposed to be asking for names and addresses for the record. Is that correct? Or, yeah, sorry. Name and address, yeah.
Okay, Reginald Grant, 5802 Ashanti Way, 32311. Good afternoon. I am here to support Demetrius Branca and Laura McNeff. I am a professor at Tallahassee State College, and Demetrius previously had presented you with a resolution in support of hands-free legislation. I'm here to provide you with a different perspective on the issue of distracted driving. My students and I partnered with Anthony Phoenix Branca Foundation for several years at TSC to promote safe driving. As you may know, Anthony was a student at my college and was actually on his way to a class when he was killed by a distracted driver. Several years ago, a student, Kerry, described a distracted driving incident he had experienced. As a car passed him on the highway, he saw the driver was on his phone. It was raining, and roads were wet. Soon afterwards, the car veered off the roadway, slammed into a tree, and caught fire. The driver was trapped in the burning car. Kerry stopped to help, and it is an experience he will never forget. He was a military veteran. He completed tours in Iraq and Afghanistan, where he was fired upon daily by snipers, RPGs, and mortars. Yet, Kerry said he never experienced PTSD until after that wreck. Now, he experiences PTSD whenever he drives in the rain. As horrific as that wreck was, it could have been so much worse. There are so many examples of distracted drivers who kill others nearby, like Anthony. Research shows that distracted driving can be just as dangerous as drunk driving. Driving is the most dangerous thing most of us will ever do on a daily basis. Some of us give it the attention it deserves. Others need incentive to do the right thing. For example, that's why we have drunk driving laws. I would ask this commission to consider passing this resolution because whatever is on our phones should never be the priority when any of us are behind the wheel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Mr. Administrator?
Next speaker, Roberta Renaud, to be followed by our final speaker on non-agenda items, Stanley Sims.
Ms. Renaud.
Roberta Renaud. Stanley Sims.
Stanley Sims, 1320 Avondale Way, known American citizen. We have to say that these days. My issue of concern is beyond you, Commissioners, but I think it would be remiss if I not mention. I've got neighbors who are running because they don't have a shelter over their head. Not a physical shelter, but not a land that they can call their own. I've never been in that situation. But just imagine being a father with children in schools where the police can just pick you up. Well, not imagine. Pick up your paper, look at the news. 12 people just got arrested in Quincy. Illegal, non-threatening, non-criminal individuals. And Commissioner Proctor, they picked tomatoes, cucumbers, and lettuce. I like all of that, but I ain't picking it. I said I like all of that, but I ain't picking it. My heart is heavy. My burdens, tears fall from my eyes, not for the pain that I am because I read somewhere that I am my brother's keeper. And even though I'm trying to keep brother in that has American card, we ain't even got nowhere to stay. That's why we all dressed up here in green. Why are we looking to find out what's so different about us? I like your hat, and I'm quite sure it's just more about you that I like than if I stop focusing on... And I'm quite sure it's just more about you that I like than if I stop focusing on what keeps us different. I'm working real hard today, all this year, to prove to people that I'm worthy, worthy to be respected, worthy to be treated like a human being. In all times, what you see ain't always what you get. Pray for me and my polar dog. I love Prince. Y'all know how I am about a dog. If I can have that kind of compassion on an animal, we should have it for each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Mr. Administrator, no more speakers?
That concludes our speakers, Mr. Grant.
All right, I think we're on consent agenda. Commissioners, we have one item that's been pulled. We'll, I'd like to set that one aside, item twenty, and take up the rest of consent. Can we get a motion from Commissioner Minor?
Mr. Chairman.
Motion, second by Commissioner O'Keefe on the consent agenda. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Sure that passes, and then we're on item twenty, which has been pulled, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number twenty is the feasibility of a storm shelter in Woodville. This was pulled by Commissioner Caban. I'll defer to Commissioner Caban. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Caban, vice chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to go ahead and pass a quick, two-page document before we get into discussion on this item. Should be two pages?
Oh, it's two-page.
Mr. Proctor, you have your copy?
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, so I asked, I guess I need a motion, right, Mr. Chair? I need a motion.
Um, I think you're okay, just Karen, discussing if you want.
Okay, thank.
No? Okay.
Okay, I'm making a motion to, I'm going to ask the board for a continuation on this item. I want to move for a continuation to have this item come back in three months.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second. Mr. Administrator, did you want to comment on this or no? Any discussion?
Okay.
You want to discuss?
Yeah, I just want to say, so, long story short, where I'm at with this, I want to thank staff, and I know they worked really hard in putting this, putting this together very, very quickly. You know, if you look at the map and the agenda item that was brought forth, there is, in the southern part of Leon County, there is no storm shelter. Our office reached out to Florida Department of Emergency Management and asked them just to kind of weigh in, and I think that there's some light, I think that it would be beneficial for county staff, our office, to kind of sit with the state and discuss through this, so hopefully that we can come to a solution that makes all of us comfortable to move forward and with the end goal of identifying a location in Woodville for a storm shelter.
Okay.
That's all I got, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. All right. So we've got a motion, a second, for a continuation of three months on this item, and no discussion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. I think we're, that's done with consent. We're on to general business, but we're going to go to number twenty-two. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number twenty-two, Commissioners, seeks the board's approval to award a contract for the solid waste management facility, Class One and Class Three, South Landfill Closure to T and K Construction. You received a brief presentation on this yesterday. To retreat, Commissioners, your item has a lot of information on it. It reflects the fact that this has been budgeted over a long number of years since we opened the landfill, consistent with the requirements to do so. And with that, we have no speakers on this item. We're recommending options one and two, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Move staff recommendation, Mr. Chair. All right, we've got a motion for staff recommendation, second by Commissioner Cummings. Any discussion? Commissioner Proctor?
What are the future plans for this landfill?
Mr. County Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, as you know, the board approved a master plan back last year on this, item in effect a couple of years ago now on this. We have closed the landfill to household garbage for many years since 2015. In the meantime, of course, we've been working on the master plan to include the transformation of that site to a, to regional park. Of course, many people are very well familiar with the Cross Country Trail and a lot of other amenities out there. Later this year, Phase Two of that master plan will be coming before the Board of County Commissioners to receive your authorization to move forward with that and the engagement of a consultant to finish out the build-out of the entire six hundred acres.
Very good. I was so impressed yesterday that previously, I believe a part of our landfill is being used for international track event, cross-country, and that was certainly a stellar innovation of landfill, and I was pondering what other great possibilities might evolve from disclosure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Any other discussion? All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Maddox, second by Commissioner Cummings. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, passes unanimously. Next item, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number twenty-three, as you may recall, during the board's legislative workshop in October, the board provided direction to issue an RFP to secure additional lobbying services for the 2025 legislative session to assist securing, in the securing of state appropriations for county projects. This item seeks the board's approval to award the contract to the highest-ranked respondent to the RFP for their services. Adequate funds are available for these additional services. The term of the contract would be for the remainder of the year. We're recommending option one. Also happy to respond to any questions or follow any additional direction that the board may have. We do have no speaker cards on this item.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioners, this is one we had discussed at our workshop. For me and county attorney, Madam County Attorney, please correct me if I'm wrong, but is it within our purview to just reject all of these RFP, all of these bids outright, and just pick who we want? Because three of the five were rejected, correct, or technically not accepted, non-responsive?
Yes, it's true that five of the, three, yeah, three of the five firms that responded were deemed non-responsive. Two didn't meet the MWVE requirements, one failed to file a mandatory form, so they were deemed non-responsive. It is within the board's purview to reject all. That is correct.
Thank you, Madam County Attorney. Commissioners, my, my suggestion would be to, based on the conversation that we had before and the sort of intent of this trial balloon of sending a team across the street to go after appropriation specifically, you would want a big firm, in my opinion, and the biggest firm that responded was Southern Group. So my suggestion would be to reject all of the RFPs, all of the bids, and just pick Southern Group. Now we can chew on that as a board all we want.
Mr. Chair, do we need a motion to discuss?
Yeah, we will take, we'll need a motion to discuss. So Commissioner O'Keefe, you're recognized.
Sure. I make a motion to accept staff recommendation to execute agreement with Ron Book based on the bids.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay, we have a second for discussion. All right, we are in discussion. Commissioner O'Keefe, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On this one, we talked about it before, I opposed it because it didn't make sense to me that we, in a hurry, hire a second lobbying firm to lobby the same body, and my understanding of discussion, the intention is, because we have a different party in charge of the state legislature and administration, that a different firm would change the nature of what they thought of a Democratic county or a largely voter, there's no Democratic Republican county, largely the voters vote Democratic here. So we have a process. We went outside of that process to have a bid done for a second duplicate firm. The staff followed the process that we asked them to follow, and they picked the best firm that was responsive in bidding. I hesitate to reject firms that, and then in order, that can follow written bidding rules and that are going to lobby us at what is, I imagine, a very technical and rules-based process for appropriations, couldn't even properly submit instead of firms that could properly submit and were ranked and were the highest. If we're going to ask staff what to do, to do a process for us to get us a second duplicate lobbying firm, we might as well follow with the guidance and the directions and the results they came from. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Caban?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am going to make a substitute motion to throw out all recommendations and hire the Southern Group.
Okay, we've got a substitute motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Second, Commissioner Proctor, we're in discussion on the substitute motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank staff primarily for putting together the RFP process and vetting all the applicants. I do have a little frustration with the process, with some inconsistencies in the procurement process. I know we can never do things perfect, and I know the intent of our staff is always to do things right and represent us well. My frustration is that Section 4.9 of the RFP reserves the right for the county to waive any minor irregularities in the application process so long that it benefits the spirit of a competitive bid process. And from my understanding, some vendors that applied, their application were bounced and deemed non-responsive for MWSBE requirements, yet the firm that is staff recommendation doesn't have an MWSBE vendor. From my understanding, all they did is send an, they sent an email and was deemed, that was deemed a good faith effort. I think that, you know, other firms, there are plenty of MWSB firms in the state of Florida, and I think an email, in my opinion, shouldn't really deem a good faith effort when there's plenty of MWSB firms in the state of Florida. But really, there's two reasons why I believe the Southern Group is primarily the best, other than the track record of being able to deliver wins for Democratic counties such as Pinellas County. If you look at their endorsements and their reference list on their application, which wasn't in the agenda material, that's why I requested it for it to be sent, that was me who requested it to be sent to the board, three of our four local delegation members have other references and on their application process. Senator Cory Simon, Representative Allison Tant, Representative Jason Chaff. Three of our four local delegation members who are elected to represent our region. Lastly, on their endorsement list is the governor's chief of staff, and so I know when we talked about in our workshop last fall, we talked about where our issue is as far as getting past a governor veto, that seems to be a big problem. And so when we're looking to hire firms, I think we should look at hiring firms that are going to complement the process. And so I think if we have an issue with getting past a governor veto, I think it makes sense that we hire a firm that can complement that process. And ultimately, our local delegation, they're the ones that are going to bat, bat with us, you know, at the state in, in session meetings. And so I think it's really important that, you know, we are, we are picking a firm that we have some synchronicity in, and so that we can like work together to deliver wins for our constituents. And last is, listen, the Southern Group is local. You know, they're around, they're around the corner from us. It's not a South Florida firm that doesn't really have, you know, ties to Leon County. I want, you know, I know we've talked about this in the past with other vendors too. I think it's important that we hire folks that, they live in our community, they drive on the same roads that we're trying to get appropriations on. You know, they're dealing with the same hurricanes when we're looking to get appropriations on storm shelters. You know, if we're looking to get appropriations for security with law enforcement, you know, they're dealing with the same crime issues that we have. They're invested in our community, and most importantly, they pay taxes in our community. So that's why I made that motion, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Caban. Any other discussion? Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a lot of respect in regard for Southern Group. I have a lot of respect in regard for Ron Book. They're, they're, those two lobbying firms are among the very best we have in the state. They really are. I have no problem working with either one. The issue that I have, though, is that we have an established process that this body decided to follow, and then once we finish that process, not everybody liked the selection, so we're now tossing the process out and going with the selection. And when you look at that from the public, looking at us and watching our actions, it looks like, it looks suspicious. Now, I'm not saying anything is suspicious. I think, I think that there are people here at the dais that just, they want to have an effective lobbyist that's going to work for the people of Leon County. I believe that. But from the public looking at us and our actions, it looks like there's something funny going on. So what I would recommend is we either accept the staff recommendation to accept, you know, to approve the selection of the firm they selected, have them work for this legislative session, it's only four months. After session, we then get a legislative wrap-up, and then at that point, the county commission to decide whether or not we want to go to an RFP for next year. Then we can open up everything. We've got a good budget amount for our lobbying services. It's going to attract lobbying firms all throughout the state. We're going to be one of the greatest clients that I think lobbying firms want to get. Let's open it up after this session and see who applies. If it's Southern Group, if it's Ron Book, if it's our current lobbyists, let's see how that process goes and what our staff recommends. But I, again, I'm happy working with whatever lobbying firm is going to help us the most, but when we, when we circumvent the process, after the process has been concluded, and go around that and pick someone else without going through the evaluation that our staff have, it just, it doesn't look right. So I'm going to vote against a motion on the floor. I would support a motion to either accept this lobbying selection for this session with the expectation that we would basically open it up this fall, or, and I think it's July when we would basically put out the RFP, or I would also support a motion to reject the process overall, stick with what we got for this session, which is starting very soon, they're in special session now, and then open it up in the fall. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Minor, I couldn't, it was a word that I, it was something I was looking for to explain why I second Commissioner Caban's motion, and you hit it. You hit the right word for me. You said the word process, the process. And on this particular date in history, there is no process in America. There's nothing normative about process governmentally. Article one of our constitution, which is a subject matter I've taught over the years at FAMU, is suspended, and the expenditure of federal dollars is something supposed to be controlled by Congress, but there's a new process in that these expenditures and control of dollars flow is occurring out of Article two, out of the executive branch, and there's no process. So what we need is, and I'm not sure, Commissioner Caban, that you know that they didn't have a minority. In today's climate across the street, a minority will not help Leon County. That's not even an asset block in the reality of Republican thought. What we need is connections, and it's clear more so than anything, we don't need a process. We need the right people who know and connected the right people. County Administrator, is, the recommendation that you all made is that, what is the political orientation of Ron Book?
Mr. County Administrator?
I would defer to Mr. Book. I don't have that information.
Mr. Book, could you tell us your political registration, sir?
Mr. Chair, through, through you?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I have been an NPA for twenty-eight years because it serves my clients best to be an NPA. If you want to talk about a lobbying firm that is well-accessed in the process, I would suggest you do nothing further than to cite to the members of your delegation that Commissioner Caban has referenced are endorsing the Southern Group application to the county, because I think you'll find that our reputation with Senator Simon, Representative Tant, would, would go a long way to give you comfort level. I think if you pick up the phone and you call James Uthmeyer, which was also cited as the governor's chief of staff, I think you'll find that our reputation on the plaza level at the Capitol is extraordinary. Much like others at the Southern Group, I pay real estate taxes in this community as well. I own a unit at 300 South Duval Street. I've owned a unit at 300 South Duval Street for over a decade. I was one of the first eight individuals that closed on it when it went into into foreclosure, I stood there and stayed there. We too have a full-time office in Tallahassee, and we pay taxes here as well. And we're in the process of building out a building for new additional offices in Leon County. I think when you talk about the budget and successes in the Republican environment, both in the House and the Senate and the plaza level, our reputations speak for themselves. We probably do more budget work than any five firms in this community. And we're considered rooted in this community. And I've lived in this community, and I may not live here full-time today. I may have two residences. But I'm a part of this community. I'm a part of the fabric of this community. And you've known me in this community, Commissioner Proctor, for a very long time. I'm rooted here. But I became an NPA 27 years ago because it was what was best for my clients and effective in my advocacy. And on the issue of minority participation, I can assure you, we reached out. We reached out to a longtime partner of our firms. We started mentoring with minority firms when it wasn't fashionable 40 years ago. And Sean Pittman is a partner of ours in a number of other bids. He wasn't available. We reached out to several others. Here's what I know. We complied with every provision in your process. We abided by every condition of your bid application process. And we're here in front of you because we want to represent Leon County at the legislature. And with all due respect to everybody in the room, it is late, but we can hit the ground running. We are familiar with the people that you have representing the community. And I can assure you, we will be aggressive and we will be effective in representing your interests across the street, and more importantly, your constituents, the taxpayers, the people that give us the opportunity. Mr. Chairman, thank you for your input.
Thank you, Mr. Book.
Mr. Chairman, my question was, was Mr. Book's party affiliation? I didn't ask all of that.
That was a long answer.
That was very long.
Wasn't all a long answer to my NPA.
Yeah. How many, since you're here, Mr. Book, and he's taken over my question?
Yeah.
How many senators of Florida do we have NPA? And how many House members are NPA? Mr. Book, you know that?
Mr. Book, you know that off the top of your head? Please, just one answer.
There are no NPAs, but they like independents.
Thank you, Mr. Book.
So, again, Commissioners, Mr. Book is not a party affiliate of nobody's party. It works for his clients. We need a Republican-based oriented firm. Mr. Book has shared, there's no one registered in the party that he's registered. And in times like these, this is connection, contact sport, with all due respect, to the process that has been mentioned by Commissioner Minor, there is no process. We note tonight, as I awakened today to learn that all federal grants had been frozen, and there were several agencies speaking to process, which I called this morning. And, Mr. Book, I'm not talking to you if you want to comfort yourself by resting and sitting down. I spoke with several agencies this morning, and what was shared with me is that I learned through one, that Tallahassee Housing Authority's monies are frozen, that their account with HUD is no longer operative. And you're talking about process, and it was supposed to take effect at 5:00 PM, but prior to 5:00 PM, there's a shutdown. People can't access their accounts with the United States government. So with all due respect to process, what I recognize is there is no process. And if you ain't a Republican, these people don't respect DEI. They don't care about DEI. They have eliminated DEI. So checking that block carries no weight. What we need to do is to get the firm, which has the most gold standard, gold standard of reputations, and in my opinion, to be represented with a diverse team. And I think that the Southern Group gives us that standard. And its names are as excellent in their work and effective as Mr. Book is, and no doubt. His reputation is well established. We received, in fact, Mr. Book, yours is the only, yours is the only firm whose records from 2020, 2021, 2023 that I've received from. And one of the questions, which I don't guess we will get to that, was a lot of the monies that your firm has acquired, I was just pondering how many of those were like our county, Democratic-based counties recognized across the street. And it's easy to get some money for red county, but a lot of this is pro-formular stuff that, on a pro-rata basis, per county size, these formulas that the legislature have to distribute and disburse monies is often formula-driven. And if you submit a form for it, you get some. But in terms of the game-changing, stellar things outside of the standard appropriation stuff, year after year after year, everybody gets the same da-da-da, I didn't see anything that was necessarily, that a blue county received that was outstanding to the things that I have an interest in. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Madam County Attorney, want to weigh in?
Yes, just a point of information as a reminder to the Commission. According to state law, Section 287.05701, and for local government contracting, an awarding body may not request documentation of or consider a vendor's social, political, or ideological interests when determining if the vendor is a responsible vendor. It may not give preference to a vendor on any of those bases.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Commissioner Cummings, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am concerned about the integrity of the process, the fact that we authorize staff and the county administrator to solicit an RFP, and we receive responsive proposals. But I want to ask the county attorney, in the statute, we weren't really, were we really required to do an RFP? Is it lobbying services exempt? This wasn't RFP? Is it? We could have gone sole source?
This wasn't governed by state law. This was governed by board direction. Under the board's purchasing policy, based on the dollar amount, it would not have required a competitive solicitation but for the board's direction.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, I mean, Madam Attorney. So since the board direction was to go out on an RFP, we followed, our staff followed that direction. So even though I am very concerned about the integrity of the process at this point, I would support my chair and co-chair in the motion that's on the floor, but I'd like to hear from other Commissioners as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Maddox?
I thought long and hard about whether or not I wanted to speak on this item, because I think it, the years I've been here, sets a very dangerous precedent, presence for us as a commission, commissions to come. And some of the lot of questioning that happened today makes that precedent even more dangerous. Madam Attorney, I appreciate your comments as far as things we can't consider when it comes to how we pick our vendors. If we wanted to pick, we should have picked before we did the RFP. Now we're in a position where we've done an RFP, staff has done their due diligence, they followed all the rules, those who were petitioning for the RFP has brought forward their proposals, and now we have results from it. And I don't think it was by any, I don't think it was on purpose, but I think we placed ourselves in a place of protests or challenges based off of some of the questions and some of the conversation that we had today. There can be very well assumed that we may not go with the applicant who, whose RFP was deemed by staff to be most responsive because that applicant is not a part of the party that's empowering the state of Florida. Madam Attorney, I don't want you to put you on the spot, but I have to ask the question. Based off of what you heard today, could we be challenged?
A challenge to this sort of an award is administrative in nature. It would be a bid protest. The only entity under the bid protest process that would have standing would be the other responsible vendor, which was not Southern Group. Could someone assert and file something in circuit court on the basis that, based on some of the comments today, there's been a violation of state law? Certainly, that could happen. But I don't know whether that would or what remedy a court would fashion in that case.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. I'm in a tough spot because I know Ron Book does a great job for his clients. And he's done so for the city of Tallahassee and Leon County, because I believe he's been our lobbyist a time or two, as well as the others that work for him. I also know that the Southern, Gunster, and others who applied does a great job for their clients. And the only thing that would have put them on equal ground to me is the RFP process, which is what we did. And we have a recommendation from staff. It's hard for me because I try my best to be as pragmatic and practical about what we're doing, but also staying within the processes that we have to go through as a county. To now say to the process that that process doesn't matter anymore because we didn't get, or the firm who we feel like was the most qualified to do the work, did not respond in a way that would allow them to be evaluated. And though I agree with the sentiments of my fellow Commissioners up here on both sides, when I was sitting down and I was thinking about this yesterday, you know, I was almost at a point, and I'm like, well, we're going to put it out, well, if it's my opinion, I think we possibly put it out in spring because we hadn't done it in a long time. And we just see what happens there. We don't select anybody. But if I was going to select a firm based off of what's in front of me, I think I put the county in harm's way by going with anyone except for what staff has recommended because of the process. And so I'm struggling. I am struggling right now. Because as much as I agree with both sides, how do you untie my hands with this? I mean, we've had conversations about political party up here. You know, we've had conversations about specific group that's more qualified. We had a conversation, I believe, about the fact that maybe even because that the group that we may want to go with is a local vendor, or the folks live here, that we will go with them because of that as well. All of which, again, being true, puts me in a place where it's just like, even if I felt really strongly about it, and I thought Ron Book wouldn't have done a good job for us, it would be hard for me right now. So I, my gut tells me to throw it all out. But if I had to, if I had to vote in favor of anything, it would be staff recommendation. Because I do believe that a good job, Mr. Book would do a good job. But I also know that everything that this group is saying about the Southern is correct as well. But do I pit one against the other, or do I allow the process itself that we asked them to go through through RFP make that decision for us? I think the reason I wanted to go to RFP is for the process to do it for us, because I didn't want to have to be in this position that we're in right now, where I'm picking the winner based off of whatever personal biases I may have, or thoughts I may have about how the process was going to go, or who's going to do a better job. So that's my opinion on it. I just, I think we need to be very careful and think about what we're doing here. Because this is a spot that I don't think future commissions would want to be in, and it sets a precedent to put future commissions in a way that they can do that. And Commissioner Proctor, the last thing I'll say, Mr. Chair, a lot of what you said, I mean, I don't think anybody in here would probably disagree with. I mean, it's not anything wrong. It's just with the process, because we went through that process, it now, it takes every argument that you have, and makes it almost, I wouldn't call it illegal, but wrong or unethical in some ways to go with it because it's our process says you can't pick based off of those things. So, Mr. Chair, those are my comments. And, you know, it kind of is frustrating for me that we're in this position. And almost in a way too, it makes me kind of sad that we're in this position, because I do, I liked the idea when we came up with it, but now it's been made messy. It's been made messy in a way because the process was rushed, I would say it was rushed. And I would say to those firms who were unresponsive, I don't think they had enough time to really get through the process to be as responsive. So even that part seemed a bit unfair. But we did have people who went through the process and were responsive. And one thing Mr. Book said was he had a hard time finding minorities. I want minorities, I said it, I said it here, I said here and said it. $10,000, I wanted minorities to get, but then they couldn't. They had to go to 4400. Well, that's a lot of money. 4400 is a good bit of money, and it's based off of disparity study that we have. But no, but the firms that would have done it were tied up. So it's just, it's a lot to consider. And I think we have to think long and hard before we made this decision, before we make this decision, and probably have more conversation than we want to have right now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, hold on. Thank you. Commissioner Proctor, I want to chime in. And we need to land this plane. I appreciate everybody's concern with process. I think the point here is the process was flawed. This was a short turnaround, and three of the five respondents were disqualified on what is largely a technicality, while the firm that was, that the RFP declared the winner could not even provide the MWSB requirement in the RFP. They just technically sent an email that said they couldn't do that. And so my frustration is, we had this conversation back in the fall, you know, two or three months ago, the point here, we're not even trying to usurp our current lobbying firm. We are trying to hire a firm for a trial balloon to go across the street in the next month and see if they can bring home some bacon through that. I have no question that Mr. Book is highly successful. I don't care if he's a Republican or Democrat or a unicorn. I'm sure, and I know, he's highly successful. But my opinion, as I stated at the earlier discussion at the workshop, was that you're trying to hire somebody to go over there and kill a rhinoceros. So you need a big gun. Southern Group is the largest lobbying firm in the state of Florida. They are right across the street. They may not be successful. They may fail. And I think to refer to the process is why I said that I felt like the process was flawed, and as well within our rights to throw out that process and just eliminate those bidders and pick who we want. It's not a commitment for, we're going to be considering this whole new contract in 2026 entirely. So that is why I tried to frame the discussion around that. I don't care about Republican, Democrat. It's about who can be most effective in a short timeframe in which we are trying to hire somebody to go and do something that they may not be able to do. So that's why I suggested we throw out the bids, and we just pick who we want, and then let it ride. And if it don't work, it don't work. If it works, it works. You've got proof of concept, and you move on. I don't think there's anything nefarious about that. I think if you look at the process, the process was flawed. People were disqualified on technicalities because they couldn't turn things in, or they didn't respond in a short timeframe over Christmas, when the actual staff recommended response was just to respond, that they couldn't do what the RFP asked for. So that is where I'm at on it. I will support the substitute motion. I do want us to get moving, though it's 4:30. So we've, is there anyone else that would like to discuss? Mr. Proctor, want to close it out for us?
Mr. Chairman, yes, sir. You know, the process that's bothering to me is that as a Commissioner, we only get Mr. Book's background credential, his firm. If we're going to have transparency, this board deserved to have seen equal information, equal resumes, equal this and that and that. That's not here before me. So if there's a, I can understand why Commissioner Maddox said he's inclined. He's inclined to
He's inclined to go with Mr. Book. Hell, he ain't seen nobody else. He ought to. That's the only inclination we've been given. In the absence of that, when you out here making, we've been blindfolded and we've been blindfolded by our staff because typically we get more data from all of the applicants who respond. That is not, in terms of a process, in my opinion, my years of experience, I've seen better. And this has been not the best presentation, the most exhaustive review. And when it comes to our legislative roles, we have discretion. This is not widgets. These are not screwdrivers. These are not commo, this is not for items and, this is for professional service. And if we have more discretion in anything, architects, engineers, public relations firm, we have far more discretion in the area of professional services than anything, any particular area. And I think that we're in good keeping here. And as the chairman said, I mean, all of these are highly competent people who know how to negotiate the language of the legislature and that three of them have done something that didn't meet our technicalities and something wrong with what we're doing. That many people, 60% of the people did not respond correctly. But I feel comfortable that we have the power to throw out or to redo the bid process and I feel comfortable that we have the authority for professional services area to utilize our discretion for the interests that we deem to be most appropriate for Leon County. So with respect to the statute that Commissioner Osteen has read, those are wonderful words, except you don't get nominated to be a judge on the basis of those wonderful words. The judges, the governor is always making appointment on political lines, Public Service Commission, judicial appointment. Congressman Lawson's district was certainly modified based on, so I don't even want to hear all that right there. So I reserve, in my discretion, as a policymaker, as a legislator, to legislate along the basis of my bias or objectivity or whatever comes in the middle. And I think that we're doing the right thing. There's nothing about bad about Mr. Book. He's just not affiliated with a party that works across the street in terms of that, his affiliation and, which is okay with him. That might, what we all need to do in a few more days. But today, we're making a decision on what we can best perceive that work. I wish we could hire all of these lobbyists. We need every last one of them for a time such as this. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Caban. Commissioner Maddox, you want to follow up?
Just briefly, there's only two registered lobbying firms, minority lobbying firms, one of which is Gunster who applied and the other is Mr. Pittman, who is already on contract with us through Mr. Sharkish Group. So you can't go to many other places because those are the only two that are registered. Thank you.
Mr. Caban, close us out, please.
I think MWSB also incorporates women-owned firms as well, not just minority, which is what the Southern Group had. Just, that's just a point of clarification.
All right, we've got a, can we?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, could you restate the motion, please?
Yeah, the motion is to throw out the bids that we've received and to select the Southern Group. That is the substitute motion. We have a motion by Commissioner Caban, a second by Commissioner Proctor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so Commissioner Cummings, were you an aye?
Aye.
Okay, so it passes four to three. All right. We are now on item 24. Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 24, Commissioners, seeks the board's, a full board consideration of appointment of four eligible applicants to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. The terms of four members are set to expire on January 31st of this year and the only Mr. Lawrence Toby is seeking reappointment. Option one is recommended. We have no speakers on this item and your eligible applicants are included in your materials.
Mr. Chair, I think I have a good list.
Yes, sir. I think staff recommendation is, well, you have one that's seeking reappointment and we have to pick three.
Yep. I move that we reappoint Lawrence Toby and then we appoint Michael Parker, Danielle Andrews, and Kristi Perkins.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for those four applicants. Any, is there a second?
I second it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, second by Commissioner Cummings. We are in discussion. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this is going to be a very challenging time for affordable housing. I'm not very sure how long the United States Department of Housing, Urban Development will survive. I'm not even sure what happens to our ship dollars. This is a tremendous time. I'm not even sure about availability for certain category of citizens to even get a bank loan. And I wish God speak to these folk in this area. And as I looked at this list, I was pondering the familiarity, if you will, of any of these applicants and have they met the challenges of affordability? Do they know that struggle? And sometimes people sit on committees to contemplate matters of which they know nothing about personally as a personal struggle. So I hope that their empathy somehow is laced with the ideas that Mr. Stanley Sims provided to us to open our meeting. Those are very important, sensitive dynamics. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner O'Keefe, can you restate for me the names you picked? I'm sorry.
Sure, I sure can. And I can also give you.
Yeah, clarify some.
Reappoint Lawrence Toby, add Michael Parker, Danielle Andrews, Kristi Perkins.
Okay.
And then to Commissioner Proctor's point, that's absolutely true. And actually, we have this last year at the suggestion of Mr. Stanley Sims, established a new appointee position on this committee specifically for someone who is a beneficiary of Housing Assistance Program or has experienced eviction in the past number of years. We haven't filled that spot. I believe the Housing Authority and Housing Services is promoting out to people to recruit applicants for that spot. I would love to put that as a qualification for every appointee, but at least, we have at least got one spot that we're getting applicants to fill specifically for that, thanks to Mr. Stanley Sims and this board.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Is there any other discussion? We've got a motion by Commissioner O'Keefe and who was the second? Did it get a second?
I seconded him.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Commissioner Cummings. Okay, so Mr. Toby reappointment, Mr. Parker, Ms. Andrews, and Ms. Perkins. Any other discussion?
Commissioner Miner didn't have any more credit on his credit card. It offered a second for this.
You don't know how true that is.
Maxed out. All right, so we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Passes unanimously with Commissioner Maddox out of chambers. And Mr. County Administrator, that takes us to the Affordable Housing item, the KJAM item. Can I just say to our friends in the audience, I imagine there's going to be a lot of speakers on this item. It is 4:38. We have to adjourn a, or not adjourn, what would you call it when you start something? Commence with our public hearing at six on the dot. And we only have six speakers and we typically would stop around 5:30 for a break ahead of our public hearing. So I'm going to stick to that 5:30 hard stop, which means we're going to have to stop this and restart it after the public hearings, which, you know, shouldn't take that long, but, you know, we'd have to take a little bit of a break. So if that's, if that's okay with you guys, that's, otherwise we just have to wait till 6 o'clock, which I wouldn't recommend.
Us here at 6 o'clock?
I'm sorry, we're not taking questions. I'm just saying, are you guys okay starting and then stopping? It may be, I mean, I assume it's going to take a while. So we're not rushing anything. We're just going to be a pause in the middle.
Mr. Chairman, we only have six speakers. That's 18 minutes.
Yeah, I think we can carry on. We only have six speakers and I appreciate those of you who may be condensing your commentary into a spokesperson. Thank you. So we'll take up the item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, as requested by the board, this item presents the proposal of the Capital Area Justice Ministry to reallocate 20% of the county's infrastructure SRTAX, which is the exclusive funding source for the county's resurfacing program to affordable housing projects. The item also details the county's recent and ongoing efforts and commitment to increase the affordable, increase the stock of affordable housing in our community. Shinkton Lammy is here, prepared to provide a brief presentation, Commissioners, on those efforts. As I mentioned, we do have several speaker cards and we are recommending option one, but with that, I'll hand it off to Shinkton Lammy.
Thank you, Shinkton. Go right ahead.
Commissioners, as I'll demonstrate with this presentation, the county's commitment to increasing the stock of affordable housing specifically for low-income households has been extensive and methodical. In the next few slides, I'll tell you why, as I talk about the highest affordable housing needs in our community and how we do it, not just through financial investment that has totaled hundreds of millions of dollars in direct and bond financing, but also policies and partnerships consistent with best practices and critical to building and sustaining long-term affordability. Finally, I'll touch on the KJAM's proposal as requested by the board and analyzing the agenda item with the help of Mark Hendrickson, who's here with us in the audience. Mark is the financial advisor and administrator for our Housing Finance Authority. He also serves in that same exact capacity for several other HFAs, including Jacksonville, Hillsborough, Pasco, and Manatee. Mark has more than 50 years of experience in affordable housing, executing over $5 billion in deals to construct over 200,000 affordable housing units across the state of Florida. And Mark also served as the very first executive director of the Florida Housing Finance Corporation, which is the agency in charge, charged by the legislators to oversee all things affordable housing in Florida, including funding and policy. So Commissioners, what I'm telling you here is that I brought a big brain to help me put this great thing behind you guys. So first, the why. As you know, Commissioners, we recognize based on the volumes of data, reports, and studies that evaluate affordability and our housing inventory, that the highest affordable housing need in Leon County is rental units for very low-income households. That's individuals and families earning 50% or less of their income, of the area median income in our community. More than 16,000 very low-income households are cost burden, which means they spend more than 30% of their income on housing. That's the largest population, of income population cost burden in our community. And according to the most recent report published by Schenberg Center just this past summer at the University of Florida, we have a deficit of more than 10,000 affordable housing rental units. But Commissioners, the need is not unique to just Leon County. The same Schenberg report indicates that rental units for very low-income households is the highest affordable housing needs in local communities, small, medium, and large throughout the state. In fact, the state deficit is more than 600,000 for that population. So it's for this reason, hundreds of millions of dollars are awarded annually through state programs for projects that provide affordable housing to low-income households. Now, I want to talk about how these projects get funded. All affordable rental projects require millions of dollars in subsidies or financial assistance to work because they offer, they offer housing to low-income households that are well below the market rate. So that means the math doesn't math unless there are subsidies for these projects. So that's where programs such as tax credits, the sale program or the state apartment incentive loan program or sale and bonds come in. They provide the multi-million dollars necessary for these projects to work. Tax credits and sale is administered exclusively by the state through the Florida Housing Finance Corporation, which, as I mentioned before, Mark used to run for over a decade. But bonds, though, can be issued either by the state or locally through a housing finance authority. And it's through the, our HFA that the county has been highly successful in recent years in increasing the stock of affordable rental housing. The HFA was created by the board for the specific purpose of building and investing in affordable rental units in our community. Upon approval by the board, the HFA can issue that all-important tax-exempt bonds to finance projects that are building rental units for low-income households. In fact, in the past five years, the board has authorized the HFA to issue more than $183 million in bonds that secured an additional $125 million in private, state, and federal funding and has had or will build more than 1,200 units of affordable rental houses for low-income households right here in Leon County. That's more units than in recent history. Historically, tax credits, sale, and bonds have been sufficient in funding projects and have not required any additional dollars. Most projects do not require any additional dollars. However, with, in recent years, especially after the pandemic, the increase of construction costs and materials with inflation and the higher interest rates, some projects have required additional dollars to get to the finish line. And so like most communities, in the local communities, the county has provided gap financing when requested in order to ensure that these projects are realized. In addition to bond financing, the county has invested approximately $5.8 million to assist in gap financing for affordable rental projects. These funds have been made possible by the board appropriating unprecedented levels of federal dollars allocated to the county through COVID-19 programs like ARPA and Emergency Rental Assistance Program or ERA. And building on those efforts, we continue to pursue federal grant opportunities, but we're not exclusively relying on grants, as we all know, we can't do that.
Amen.
Our approach to increasing affordable housing in our community includes establishing policies that are utilizing dedicated funding source for affordable housing, implementing landmark legislation like the Live Local Act, and strengthening our partnerships specifically with our partners over at the city. In terms of programs, recognizing that some projects may need gap financing, in 2023, the board established the SHIP Rental Development Program to provide financial assistance to rental projects that dedicate units for low-income and very low-income households, again, addressing our highest needs. This program was established with SHIP funding, which is the dedicated funding source for affordable housing distributed to local governments, that's both counties and cities, annually through the Florida Housing Finance Corporation. We currently have approximately $400,000 available today for projects that can be utilized for a variety of needs, including land acquisition, construction, rehabilitation, and they, units, again, I will reinforce it, units have to be set aside for low-income households as well as very low-income households. Currently, Florida statutes limits what we can allocate in SHIP fundings for rental development. And we're actively working with the Florida Association of Counties as well as the Florida League of Cities on legislation that will provide us greater flexibility on utilizing SHIP funds on rental development. Because as I shared earlier, Commissioners, other local communities are experiencing a high need for rental units just like us for the very low-income population. And so they also realize that SHIP is the most appropriate funding source to invest in such projects, the dedicated funding source for affordable housing. We're also implementing landmark legislation like the Live Local Act to incentivize and increase affordable rental units for low-income households. Adopted by the Florida Legislature in 2023, the Live Local Act provides up to 100% property tax exemption to developers to construct and dedicate units for low-income households. And it allows new rental projects that dedicate at least 40% of units to low to moderate-income households, the highest use on development regulations such as density, height, and parking. Just last year during the 2024 legislative session, local governments with a sufficient level of units for workforce housing, also known as moderate-income housing, were given the ability to opt out of proportion of the property tax exemption. of the property tax exemption. Leon County was one of those counties identified that could opt out because it was determined that we had a sufficient level of, again, workforce housing. But we did not opt out. We recognize that property tax exemption is a resource. It's another tool in our toolbox in addressing affordable housing. So in partnership with the city, the HFA, the property office, we're promoting the property tax exemption as well as the highest allowable uses to developers through our website, speaking engagements, and regular operations to encourage, encourage the construction of more affordable housing. And speaking of the city, we regularly coordinate and collaborate with them on the investment and pop, on the investments and policies, especially when it comes to affordable rental development. And that's because 95% of developments are within the city limits. And that's appropriate because it aligns with best practices. You want your affordable rental units for low-income families in the urban core, near public transit, near commerce, grocery stores, and employment centers. We also partner with the city because they have the financial resources to invest and address affordable housing. The city is recognized by HUD as an entitlement community, and therefore they receive approximately $2 million in annual funding from the feds for programs such as affordable housing. Additionally, the city receives significantly more ship funds than the county since the distribution is based on population. So the city receives two times more amount of ship funds than the county that they can, that they can invest for opportunities like rental development projects. And finally, the Tallahassee Housing Authority, which is a great partner, but also was created by the city and is a special district of the city. They provide affordable rental units to low-income residents through public housing and federal housing vouchers. So as a result, the city is a critical partner in our efforts to address affordable housing and has been, and that has been effectuated in so many ways, commissioners. It's been through our collective investments of more than $11 million in direct funding to rental, uh, projects, the establishment of the Tallahassee Leon County Community Land Trust, where we're ensuring that affordable housing, housings, our units are remain affordable in perpetuity, and the adoption of an inter-local agreement that allows us to pool our ship dollars on rental developments together on projects within the city limits. This is our approach, commissioners, to increasing the stock of affordable housing, specifically rental units. Again, investing unprecedented levels of federal dollars, implementing, establishing pro, programs with funds dedicated for affordable housing, implementing landmark, landmark legislation, all in lockstep with the city. This has been highly successful, as evident with more than 1,200 units that have been, been, or will be constructed in our community in the next 12 to 18 months, including more than 100 of those for very low and extremely low-income households. So the Cajun proposal is a, is a different from the approach the county has employed. So I'll introduce it and allow Mark to, uh, come and speak a bit on it. But the Cajun is proposing, and I'll, and I'll just give it a little bit of intro as Mark comes up. Cajun is proposing that the county, as the county administrator mentioned, reallocates 20% of its portion of the infrastructure CER-TAC, which equates to $1.2 million, and is currently dedicated to resurfacing projects on con, on county-maintained roads, to establish a land acquisition program that would purchase land for proposed rental development projects that must then set aside units for very low and extremely low households. I'm going to turn it over now to Mark, hot, now to share why the Cajun proposal would not create more affordable housing units and provide more insight into the Pinellas County model, a program that, um, that Cajun is attempting to, uh, use as a model.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, I'm Mark Hendrickson, and I'm happy to be here. First thing, though, I, I want to say is, whatever disagreement we have on some of the detail, I really want to thank the people that are advocating for affordable housing. This group is incredibly well-intentioned and well-organized and has done a great job of doing research into affordable housing, and they really are to be commended for that. Not in, in anything that I say is not in any way trying to, you know, to, to cast dispersions on, on the motivation and the hard work that they've done to bring this issue forward. The, the issue that when, and Shington and, and others asked, you know, the Housing Finance Authority and myself to take a look at this, and we had meetings, and, and basically, this is what, what we find, is that we would all welcome additional funding for affordable housing from whatever source it could come from. And, but that's not the Housing Finance Authority's role to decide what, you know, how much, or if, or where you get it. That's, that's a county commission role. So I'm not here to comment on the, on the source. But we do know that if we had additional funds, we could do more units. And the key is more units. The, the issue that I had when I looked at the proposal was that it wasn't going to create any new units, any additional, that it only was going to take projects that were already going to be built. So we know, we've, we had a hundred-unit deal, it went to the state, it got sale money, it got ship money, it got bonds, whatever, and they're going to do 100 units. This proposal would say, well, within those 100 units, we're going to shift around a little bit what your income set-asides are. So we're going to have fewer 60% AMI units and a few more 40s or 50s. There's nothing wrong with that, but it doesn't get you any more units. And our need is more units, not reshuffling between 40, 50, and 60% within a deal that's already going to be done. So when we look at, at what others do and what is needed, we see that, that, uh, gap financing, which is just a fancy word for filling the difference between how much money they can get and what it costs to build. It's pretty straightforward. You know, I can borrow this much, I can get this much from Florida Housing, but it costs this much, and I got to fill that gap. So, uh, that's where the need can be. Briefly, and, and I don't want to take up more time, this, you know, you've got a lot of speakers, but, um, recently, the, the city of Jacksonville appropriated $1 million for gap financing in conjunction with $1 million that their Housing Finance Authority had. So 2 million, it's not a whole lot, but it was like, let's see what'll happen. And there was a, a no-fund, notice-of-fund availability put out. And what they found is they got a, one deal came in that was the Salzabacher Center for the Homeless, extra, a lot of extremely low-income homeless people. It had gotten grants from the state, from private foundations, from everywhere. It was doing bonds, getting tax credits, but it was a million and a half bucks short of what they needed. That gap financing filled that gap. It didn't change around the set-asides within it, but it provided just that little, in a, in a $40 million deal, it got that last million and a half to get them over the finish line. And then there was another developer that, that had, uh, you know, had gotten sale and, and other resources from the state, uh, but they were only going to do a 50-year set-aside. And with $500,000 of additional gap financing, they agreed to do it in perpetuity. So it's not always the same way, but what we see is we need more units, we need a source of gap financing to try to get more units. And, and while I, I really celebrate the work of, of the organization, I think the specific proposal that they have as to how to use the money is, is not the most efficient one, and, and there are other ways that would be better. Uh, thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions or turn it back to Shington.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrickson. Uh, Shington, you can come back up. Um, thank you. Are you guys going to stick around? Mark, you sticking around?
Um, I'm sorry to say this, I view this, but my highest priority in life is coaching baseball at Capital Park, and that takes priority even over this issue. I'm sorry.
Okay. I would like to offer commissioners the opportunity to ask you questions, Mark, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner O'Keefe, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, thank you very much, Mark, and thank you for your years of work on this issue. I appreciate all the education you've given me since I started. Um, you talked about the deal where, uh, you talked about if we got more money, um, there's a different way to get more units. But you also mentioned this deal where for a half million dollars, you, you were able to get a developer from only 50 years of guaranteed affordable to in perpetuity. Can you explain what's the impact and the benefit of that perpetuity in, in units over the years?
Yeah, it's, it's, even if you define perpetuity as 99 years, which I, it's really longer, it's almost like doubling the amount of units. If, if I have 100 units for 50 years, but I can get them forever, it, it's, it's, you're, you know, instead of having to do a new 100 units at whatever point their, their, uh, their land use restriction ended, you, you just keep those units. And it's, people say, well, it's not going to be the same units. They're going to rehabilitate them. They're going to, but the underlying land keeps a restriction so that on that land, you will forever have affordable housing, uh, you know, and, and it's just, it's a massive benefit, way beyond a benefit of, of, you know, I could do 10 more at 40 or something. The, the most important public policy thing you can get to in, in affordability is, is perpetuity, so that you create a permanent stock of housing and land that's dedicated for affordable housing.
Excellent. And then, um, that's helpful as we consider this. And then, uh, in that example, in Jacksonville, it was like a half million dollars, um, is there, if a commissioner were to, uh, come up with, you know, money, if this money didn't go to this proposal, came to the Housing Finance Authority, uh, can that build on things you already have going? Or how does that new idea that you were suggesting, uh, work?
Uh, you would do some kind of a notice, you know, a, a public notice of, and solicit proposals to come in. Some of them might be deals we don't even know about. Uh, it also could be a deal that's, that's, you know, under construction or getting ready to go under, and they would agree to a difference. But, you know, it's a bottom line. It's all the, you know, from a development standpoint, you just got to make the numbers work. And if, if somebody says to me, I get a half million dollars more paid developer fee, and I'm already at 50, might as well go perpetuity, that's a deal that most developers will take.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Proctor, go right ahead.
I, I've heard, uh, Mr. Henderson, um, comments and whatnot, and, uh, to a banker, um, to the F, uh, HFA and all of that. But we're in a room with people whose thoughts are, are not congruent, uh, with your own thinking. And their ask is, uh, simply for the chance for us to take that step and to foster public policy that would, though it would not create any more units, in his mind. But this is the faith community. These people believe you can take two fishes and some bread. These people right here think you can get a, a bottle of water and turn it into wine, and everybody's happy. This is a different essence. And you can't put a, uh, business model perspective on what faith can do. So we're well pleased with the sharpened pencils and the measured, uh, analysis that you've offered. Uh, but accept through the foolishness of preaching, or those kind of words. But I share the mindset of the people in green in here. And I believe that what they're asking is if we put this on the books and take a stance into the, uh, money, money community that makes these kinds of evaluations, it don't look like none of them. But when God steps up, if it's on the book, what are you talking about? Not even, you know, just don't even measure up. So I lean toward faith, and I know that the county attorney read a statute that I can't make religious decisions or decisions y'all heard or read up. But, um, I have faith, and it's the same quality, uh, and dimension of thought that undergirds and makes impossibles possible. And God specializes in making the, uh, possible from the impossible. So, um, Shington, we appreciate you, and you're supposed to make sure that all the noted authorities. But I'm going to walk with faith community, uh, because I know that there is a God who specializes in making possible things out of impossible things. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms., Commissioner Proctor. Um, all right. Uh, if there's no, anybody, Commissioner Maddox? I'm sorry, uh, Madam County Attorney, go ahead.
Uh, just a point of information. The statute I previously referenced that with contracting only, it does not apply in this context. Thank you.
Very good.
My halo is still shining bright.
Mark, good afternoon. How you doing?
Good to see you, Commissioner.
Uh, have you, have you sat down with, uh, leadership of Cajun to, to look over this proposal?
Yes, we, we talked and had a meeting. I've talked to them multiple times. And, and we had also a meeting last week with Shington set up.
Right.
So, you know, we're, you know, we're clearly of the same mindset that we think an investment of money would be great.
Right there, right there. What are the commonalities in the conversations that, when you were having those conversations with those folks, what were the commonalities that were, that were coming out of it?
That an additional commitment of resources is a good public policy investment.
Okay.
And, but exactly how you would use those resources to get the best impact is where I think we differ.
Has your, um, has your, has your board seen the presentation, seen the proposal? Has, has there been conversation?
She's gotta call me!
I'm sorry, my child is calling me. Sweetheart, I'm in a commission meeting. I'll call you back. Okay, you get done at 6:00. Okay, babe. Okay, um.
Lose your train of thought there?
It happens to me all the time. Has the board had conversations with, with Cajun folks? Here, here's where I'm getting at. Um, there's two things I said last time, and I believe some of you were here. There's one, the first thing is that I didn't want to harm any existing county programs. I didn't want to do anything that would do that. The second thing was, I wanted to make sure that if we were involved, that we were able to get the city involved as well, because I don't, I believe most of the affordable housing we need would be in the city limits. And so I wanted to be able to partner on that. Listening to, to the commonalities of the, of the conversation, that's, that's why my question is what it is, between HFA, which is the county's arm that looks to do affordable housing for the county, and this Cajun group, though you may not be on the same page as far as proposals concerned, I believe there's a commonality that one day will push you towards the, the same, uh, or, or something that works for everybody in a way that can, that could push resources that we have towards affordable housing. And so I agree with everybody in here. We need more money towards affordable housing. I also, um, in my other job, understand that when it comes to affordable housing, yes, land is important, but that gap funding, that, that money, cash money, and being able to commit that cash money to the project is probably more important than giving the land. And so what I'm inclined to do, Commissioner Proctor, is not, I'm not at all at a point where I don't agree with either party here. But I think there's a step that we're missing. Um, one, or actually two steps. One, what is the state going to do as far as affordable housing is concerned? Two, is there a way that, uh, the leadership of Cajun can meet and, and have conversation with the HFA board, who is our arm, who's supposed to be helping us do this anyway, to come up with a proposal that works for both parties? And if it doesn't, then I think we take this back up and we move in the way we got to move. But if that hasn't happened, that's what I would like to happen. Mark, has that happened?
Uh, no, we've, we have not. Again, we're invited by your staff to participate in this as opposed, it's not like Cajun brought us the proposal and, or that we saw this proposal floating and jumped in with an opinion.
Understand, I'm not.
So, but yes, the board clearly would, would welcome meeting with, with the group and trying to work through it. And, and, you know, I commit to continue to work with them to try to come to a, a common conclusion. So absolutely.
Understand that my support of the proposal isn't, isn't based off of what the HFA board has to say or, or is going to say. But I do believe that if there's a synergy there with like-mindedness on us investing more money, those two, this faith-based community mixed with the HFA, which is professional on, on this and trying to figure out how we conquer this problem, might not be a bad idea. And we may push it, what, a few meetings? idea, and we may push it, what, a few meetings, for, for you guys to be able to work that out, that'd be past session, everybody will know what the state's doing, you guys be able to have a conversation, be able to come, bring something back to say we could agree on this, or we couldn't agree on that, and then we can really make a really good decision on, on what we're going to do with those dollars. I like the Pinellas County proposal, but Pinellas County is Pinellas County. In, in, in the world of Florida Association of Counties, we believe in what we call, uh, home, home rule, which means that what's right for Pinellas may not be right for Leon County. What's right for Leon County might not be right for Miami-Dade. What's right for Miami-Dade may not be right for what's Jacksonville. But what we do, what we do have is we have a group of concerned citizens here that want to see us do something about this, invest more money. We have an HFA who agrees that we can do more and invest more money. Why not put those two together and see what we come up with? So, it is, when we get to that point, I, because I don't, I don't, I don't want to leave you guys hanging on that, that's where, that's where I would be. Not to reject the proposal, but, but to have the, the Cajun folks work with the HFA, see if we can come up with something that, that conquers, that, that deals with that piece of the puzzle that is the financing, that's not the land, but the financing piece, that's such, that's such a problem for organizations who are trying to do affordable housing, while also creating perpetual plots before affordable housing at the same time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Um, Commissioners, I, I think that we're not in the discussion section yet, we're a little premature here. So, we still have to hear from speakers, um, and then we're going to take a hard stop at 5:30, and we're going to come back. So, this is more geared towards specific, and I would say probably technical questions for Mr. Hendrickson. If we don't have any more of those, let's move on to our speakers, let Mr. Hendrickson go coach some baseball. Uh, thank you for, for your, your information and for being here, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks the commission for your interest in the issue, and, uh, appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, Mr. County Minister, or, Shinkton, do you have to close for us?
Yeah, I just, I just want to wrap it up with just a couple of more key, um, pointers, Commissioners. Um, so, one of the things that, of course, of the Cajun proposal is utilizing the infrastructure surtax. So, one of the things that is very, um, important is that to understand that those dollars are significantly restrictive, okay? Those dollars have to be used for land acquisition only.
Right.
As I shared before, our program that we currently have in place right now, and the things that we've been doing in assisting, um, projects, has been specifically to assist in land acquisition, construction, primarily construction, and rehabilitation. You can't do that with the surtax dollars. Those dollars have to be used for land acquisition. So, for example, Commissioners, a couple of years ago, if this, if this program, as proposed, had been in place, we could not have invested in Orange Avenue redevelopment. Tallahassee Housing Authority already owns their land, so we could not fund land acquisition for that project. What we were able to do with those unprecedented levels of, of federal dollars was to assist them, because we had the flexibility to assist what they really needed, and that was the fact that construction costs had skyrocketed as they were trying to build those, that property out there on Orange Avenue. This project, this proposal would not have allowed us to do that. So I just want to make, bring that, um, and then, of course, as Commissioner Maddox mentioned, this program would harm a county, a, a program. And that is a program that is dedicated to our resurface program, where we're, where we're specifically providing a very core function of county government, and that is maintaining our roads, our, and the safety of our roads. That's the program that is funded right now. These are not extra dollars, these are dollars that are being utilized right now in our community to resurface our, our, our roads. And so that being said, we, our proposal, our, our recommendation is that we don't, we, um, that we don't move forward with this proposal, but instead, um, we accept the report, and what we will be providing is an update, uh, to the board as part of the 2026 budget workshop on the things that we talked about in, in the agenda items, such as looking at opportunities where we can get more flexibility in utilizing ship, dedicated funding for affordable housing specifically, so that way we can do more work with rental development, and not just us, the city also. Because again, as I've shared before, the city is a, is a, um, critical partner in, throughout this entire conversation, when we're talking about building rental development. And with that.
Point, point of information.
Um, thank you, Shinkton. Uh, you go ahead, Mr. Commissioner Proctor, real quick, if you can.
Shinkton, and, 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 um, Vince, uh, for all the monies that we utilize with Tallahassee Housing, uh, that was during the COVID era.
Correct, yes.
Wasn't some of the rules relaxed with respect to our flexibility to use some money back then?
Those were federal dollars, and then the board, um, we did, we did have flexibility, but at the end of the day, it, it took the board taking action to say, we're going to invest our dollars, our, our P dollars, as well as our ERA dollars, into, um, more affordable rental units and, and provide gap financing for that project.
And, and that was gap funding that we did and the city did to, I believe, fill a $5 million hole.
In partnership. Actually, in total, for the both of us, it was $11 million.
Okay, very good. All right. Um, I, Chairman, you asked, I'll be quiet. Let's go ahead.
We're going to have plenty of time to gnaw on the bone, Commissioner Proctor, as you like to say. Um, uh, thank you, Shinkton, I assume you'll stick around. Okay, uh, uh, we have six speakers, Mr. County Administrator. Um, at, at three minutes a clip, that's 18 minutes, that'll take us to like, um, 3:33-ish, uh, 3:35-ish. Uh, if we can get through our six speakers. I'm sorry? I'm sorry, what did I say, five? I meant 5:33. I'm sorry. Uh, my apologies. So, uh, let's try to get through as many speakers as we can, um, before we take our, our short little recess. Uh, Mr. County Administrator, go ahead.
Shantera Tisdale, to be followed by Fred Hadley.
Ms. Tisdale, name and address for the record, please, thank you.
Hello. First and foremost, thank you for giving me the opportunity to share my story. I'm sorry, I apologize. My name is Shantera Tisdale. Address is 1053 Dover Street, Tallahassee, Florida, 32304. Um, first and foremost, thank you for giving me the opportunity to share my story and shed light on the challenges of finding truly affordable housing. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development defines affordable housing as housing that costs no more than 30% of a household's gross income, including utilities. But for people like me, this definition is nothing more than a theory. It doesn't reflect the harsh realities of what affordable housing actually looks like in our community. Let me make one thing clear, affordable housing isn't the issue, it's the lack of affordable housing that is devastating families like mine. To fully understand how unaffordable housing impacts people like me, let me share my reality. I earn $3,040 a month before taxes. According to HUD, I shouldn't pay more than $912 a month for housing and utilities combined, but here's the truth. I pay over 50% of my income, nearly $1,600 each month, just to keep a roof over my family's head. I'm a single mother of three with 12 years of experience in the medical field and professional certifications to match. I've worked tirelessly to provide for my children. I take pride in the career that I've built, but none of that matters when it comes to finding housing I can afford. A quick search on Zillow or Apartments.com paints a clear picture of the problem. Affordable housing for my income doesn't exist. Instead of finding options within my budget, I get the same message repeatedly, edit or remove these filters for better results. Translation, there's nothing here for you. Now, let me with, uh, that, sorry. That leaves me with two impossible choices, pay over half my income on housing, or face instability and uncertainty. The consequences of paying over 50% of my income for housing have been devastating for my family. To make ends meet, I've been forced to work two full-time jobs, that's 80 hours a week. I've worked every shift available, days, nights, double shifts, and even stretches of 32 days without a single day off. I've sacrificed sleep, my own health, and time with my children just to stay afloat. But working this much has come at a cost far greater than financial strain. My children are suffering. I can't nurture them the way they deserve. I miss moments like, I, I miss moments that I'll never get back, like helping with homework, sitting down for dinner, tugging the man at night. My presence in their lives is sacrificed because I'm trying to keep a roof over their head. And despite my relentless efforts, my income disqualifies me from government assistance programs like food stamps or Section 8 housing. Instead, I'm penalized for working hard, stuck in a system that leaves no room for people like me who are doing everything we can, but still can't get ahead. Even with two incomes, housing remains unaffordable. Yes, I pay my rent, but at what cost? Over 50% of my income is gone before I can even think about groceries, utilities, or the basic needs of my children. This isn't sustainable, not for me, not for my kids, and not for the thousands of families in our community facing the same impossible choices. This isn't just my story, it's the story of so many others. Affordable housing isn't just a financial issue, it's a human issue. It's about ensuring that families like mine don't have to sacrifice everything just to have a place to live. So I'm here today to speak not just for myself, but for every family struggling to survive in a system that has failed them. Housing is more than a roof over our heads, it's the foundation for stability, security, and hope. No one should have to work themselves to the point of exhaustion just to pay over half their income for housing. It's time for a change, and it's time for all of us to demand it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tisdale.
Fred Hadley, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, Fred Hadley, to be followed by Sylvia Jones.
Mr. Hadley, please name an address for the record, thank you.
My name is Fred Hadley. I live at 2500 Elliot Street in Tallahassee. I'm here this afternoon to speak on behalf of someone I know personally who is homeless. Most of us see people on the corner, and we don't know them, but I know a person by name. Not only is that person homeless, that individual has been sleeping in a car, and I feel that, that is very heartbreaking, and affordable housing would go a long way to help this individual and others like that person. So, I'm here to challenge you, do whatever you possibly can to help alleviate the less fortunate in our community. I'll close with one saying, but for the grace of God, there go I.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley.
Sylvia, Sylvia Jones, to be followed by Saskia Fagan.
Good afternoon. My name is Reverend Sylvia Jones. I live at 4250 Woodbridge Road in Tallahassee. I'm a member of Cajun through the Mount Zion AMI Church in Havana, and I'm one of the Cajun co-chairs for affordable housing. Testimonies that you hear from people that we know, they're all personal. I am speaking today on behalf of my granddaughter, who a year ago had a state job making minimum wage. In order to make a living wage, she would work on the weekends, uh, so she'd get tips as a waitress. She was looking for a place to stay. After weeks of searching for an affordable place to stay, she finally found a two-bedroom duplex in northwest Tallahassee. After paying the $60 application fee, you know, the, the fees run from $25 to $125, and they're non-refundable, she found the place for $1,095. She had to pass a background check, have a credit score of 600-plus, and to prove that she had made three times the rent, uh, per month in order to be considered for the apartment, that's $3,285. Honestly, she couldn't make it without us, she couldn't make it without her family backing her up. She's in better shape now, but she's also in better shape than her girlfriend, who had been living in a car with her baby. She found, she finally got, she was looking for a place to stay, finally got a job at Amazon while she was living in her car. But as a result of still having to live in the car and do couch surfing, someone reported her, reported her that she, reported that she had the baby in the car with her. DCF intervened. Her child has been placed with one of her relatives. In the meanwhile, she had an accident, couldn't get to work at Amazon, lost her job. She's still in the car. So, please help us provide our children, our grandchildren, our seniors on fixed income with the opportunity to find a humane, living space that they can afford. Affordable apartment, apartment rentals is the last step before homelessness. Let us give them the opportunity to lead normal lives with a little bit of dignity. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Uh, good afternoon, Saskia Fagan, 1575 Paul Russell Road. Thank you, Ms. Sylvia. I'm also the embodiment of the women who have helped me to survive. Um, I have been a homeowner in Tallahassee since 2020, a condo, for context, that I would not be able to afford to purchase right now in 2025 due to inflation and a drastic increase in the cost of living today. The testimonies we have just heard have put flesh and blood on this sterile statistic that 16,000 families in Leon County earning less than $43,000 in income per year are severely housing cost burdened, spending more than half their income on rent and utilities. These are real people experiencing the grim realities of our affordable rental housing crisis right now. Friends, members of our families, and members of our congregations. These are working people, living precariously while trying to make ends meet. A single incident can put them over the edge, requiring them to find a new residence, move their children to a different school, or forego paying for childcare, food, or medical care. Some lose their job because they no longer have the means to get there, some becoming unhoused altogether. Nationally, a $100 increase in rent is associated with a 9% increase in homelessness. As we have emphasized repeatedly, the experts agree that the principal cause of homelessness is the lack of affordable rental housing. Working families should not have to make these choices. Working families should not have to move every time a landlord raises their rent, disrupting their children's education and impairing their emotional health. Working parents earning more than the minimum wage should not have to live in their cars while they search for housing they can afford, or wait for emergency housing accommodations at Hope Community. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. spoke of beloved community as a vision that can be attained by a critical mass of committed people, a community where all people share in the wealth of the earth, where poverty, hunger, and peep, and homelessness are not tolerated, and where systemic racism and all forms of discrimination, bigotry, and prejudice are replaced by an all-inclusive spirit. You have before you Cajun's proposal to take meaningful action towards achieving Dr. King's vision. Please act now to do so and vote to implement Cajun's proposal as a part of the 2026 budget. Thank you all, and thank you for the folks who have gathered here today to stand in solidarity. It's essential that we continue to do so in the coming months and years, and ensure our work and advocacy continues to be intersectional and rooted in community care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Dial, to be followed by Latricia Scriven.
Name and address for the record, Mr. Dial.
Uh, my name is Robert Dial. I reside at 2394 Carefree Cove. I am a co-chair of the Cajun Affordable Housing Strategy Team. We are disappointed by staff's response to your November direction to analyze Cajun's proposal to set aside 20% of the county's blueprint sales tax revenues for an affordable rental housing program. Several of you have said that you wanted to learn what impact such a reallocation would have on the county's road surfacing operations. But instead, as Shinkton Lamy has repeated today, you received descriptions of the county's existing affordable housing programs and a few new initiatives, and the simple assertion that these revenues are the only source of funding for road resurfacing. The staff has made no attempt to assess how those operations could be adjusted to accommodate a 20% allocation, reallocation. We have provided to you by both email and in hard copy, our assessment of the ongoing programs and new initiatives described by staff in the agenda packet and by, uh, Shinkton this evening. Current and past programs have not made a substantial impact on the estimated 10,000-unit deficit in rental housing that non-student families with very low and extremely low incomes can afford. That is the reason why we, for the past three years, have been attempting to get local initiative to motivate rental housing developers to set aside more units for initiative to motivate rental housing developers to set aside more units for families with these incomes. Mark Hendrickson's assertion that our proposal would not increase the supply of affordable housing is absolutely correct. That's not the problem we've been talking about for three years. The problem is that the developers do not have the financial incentive to set aside more of those units for folks like you've just heard from. There is no point in sending us to meet with the HFA board to find some common ground. We're talking about two completely separate sets of objectives. Increase the total supply of affordable housing? That's a great idea. But our problem of concern is those units are not being built for the folks that need it the most, the folks with very low and extremely low incomes. While resurfacing roads is clearly important, asserting that any reduction in funding will imperil road safety is an unfounded simplification. Safe and stable housing for children is a more critical need. Some adjustments in funding for scheduling, repaving projects are a small trade-off to free up resources to finally begin to address this crisis. Please vote to implement the Cajun proposal, and thanks for paying attention.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Name an address for the record, please.
Greetings. I'm Latricia Scriven. I am the senior pastor at St. Paul's United Methodist Church and the co-president of Capital Area Justice Ministry. My colleagues have really laid it out. They've said it. They've also noted that we have been at this for over three years. It has been years. And we are saying that now is the time. We are here today. We showed up. We stayed. We are still here because we have the audacity to believe that our presence, our stories, our people, and even our prayers, that they will actually matter. We get that there are a lot of decisions that you have to make. There are projects and priorities and expectations and even allegiances, and also the complexities that come along with budgets and appropriations. But one thing we know that remains clear, and that is that people are struggling. The people with very low and extremely low incomes need for action to happen now. Since we have been here, since I have been here today, I have met an individual that works at this courthouse full-time, that struggles to find affordable housing and has lived in their car for about three and a half weeks. It is unacceptable, and the problem is pervasive. We are not asking you to choose one critical issue over another critical issue. We are asking that you do both, and we believe that both can be done, and we believe that a small allocation is a small price to pay for a really big impact on the families who really need us the most. For us, this is not just a matter of debate, it is a matter of survival for some of the most vulnerable among us. And whether we accept it or not, we really are all together in an inescapable network of mutuality. We are tied together in a single garment of destiny, and whatever affects one of us directly affects us all indirectly. I believe that we can do something. Not only the 16,000 families that are in this position are counting on you, our commissioners, but the many people who stand alongside are counting on you to do something, to embrace the proposal, to make action happen, and to bring a change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scriven.
Yeah, one more speaker. Final speaker, John Hendrick.
Oh, wrong town, Hendrick.
Hey, John, name an address for the record, please.
John Hendrick, 1551 Crispell Ball Drive. Um, I'm supportive of the Cajun proposal, although I'm not an officially sanctioned Cajun speaker. So, I'm, but it just occurred to me, because I've known all y'all and you've known me, and we've been very active in political and issue circles for many, many years here in this community. Just because it's enunciated that the rest of the state isn't doing something for affordable housing, doesn't mean we shouldn't do something for affordable housing here. B, everyone keeps yammering about the fact, well, let's do something in conjunction with the city, or let's let the city take the lead, because maybe that's where most of the problem is. If everyone's been paying attention, there's this called a 3-2 divide over in the city, and this issue unfortunately is on the wrong side of that divide, at least so far.
Amen.
And, as we all saw at Blueprint, y'all were willing, at the board at Blueprint, y'all were willing to go forward, but once again, that 3-2 from the city stymied us from being able to go forward through that venue. So, Blueprint obviously would have been a joint venture that y'all collectively could have gone through. This is what Cajun has come up with. They've done their research. They've done their work. They've got a model, the Pinellas Model. It will work here. That type of model, it doesn't really matter where you are in the state. And if you do something, maybe then the city will follow and do something. Somebody's got to take the lead. This time, it's y'all to take the lead. Please vote, advance the Cajun proposal, and let's do this. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrick. Um, okay, do we have any more speakers, Mr. County Administrator? Okay, we are going to recess until, uh, 6 o'clock for our public hearing.